I guess we're ready to go. Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting July 28, 2014. The Board was in executive session since 6:00 PM and we are late, obviously, and thank you for waiting outside, but we can begin and please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for us.
I have a couple of announcements tonight. The first one being that this Wednesday at 6:00 PM, the Senior Center Working Group that is working on a new senior center, working on actually a site location, they're having a forum, a public forum, at the library, in the Herman Room, I believe, starting at 6:00 PM. So they really would like to have a lot of people here from the community that like to share the work they've been doing for the last few months and discuss with the community the various sites that are available for us to look at and hopefully cite a new senior center. So if you are available Wednesday at 6:00 PM, please consider attending. Seems I have duplicates of things here, so I have to get through all the duplications. I think I have a zillion. What I don't seem to have is...I know, that's what I'm looking for and I don't see it here, but thank you. All right, the next thing we want to do is announce the November 2014 Annual Town Meeting. And the warrant will close on Friday, September 12, 2014. The Selectmen will vote the articles and execute the warrant on Monday, September 22. The articles will be...only the articles will be published on Friday, September 26. The Selectmen will vote the article recommendations on Monday, October 30, and the warrant will be published with the recommendations by Friday, October 24, and town meeting will begin on Monday, November 17. So...did you see a proclamation? By any chance? I don't...well, I think we'll...there is a...there is a notation here...
Yes, here it is. You want it?
About a proclamation for Commander John Davis who retired from the Coast Guard?
Yep. You want it?
Well, yeah, I don't see...I don't know. I have so many duplicates of things here. I don't think it's in proclamation form though, is it? No, it's not in proclamation form yet, so we will have to wait until our next meeting. They asked us if we would provide one, and of course, we're always delighted to issue proclamations for very worthy community members for having done very wonderful things, and Harry certainly has in all of his time with the Coast Guard. So we'll begin with public comment.
Excuse me, just a note, his retirement will...the ceremony actually will be before our next meeting.
Oh, it will?
So they could just announce that his retirement ceremony will be on August 2.
On August 2. Well, then maybe what we could do is, I think we would support having a proclamation because the language...some of the language is in here, and then what we can do is put it in the office and then maybe you can sign it between now and August 2. the Coast Guard Cutter Escanaba in Boston, serving as a First Lieutenant. After this tour ended, he was transferred to the Coast Guard Cutter Jefferson Island in Portland, Maine, and served as the Executive Officer till 1996. Then he was transferred to First Coast Guard District in Boston as the Admiral's Aid. And the first week as Admiral's Aid started with a crash of TWA 800 off Long Island. And in 1999, he was then released from active duty and transferred into the reserves. And his first reserve unit was facilities design and construction in Norfolk. And, and then from there, he went back from, to the facilities at Norfolk and the Acting Executive Officer as a Project Manager for Reconstruction of the Coast Guard Station at Indian River Inlet in, in Washington. And in 2012, he did some active duty for the construction of the National Capitol, Regional Air Defense Command, and Washington National Airport. And then he oversaw the 10 million conversion of the 1940 hangar to the Coast Guard's new air station at Washington National. And then his final assignment was in Witsole. And so we wish him well in his retirement, and we will have something for him on his retirement day. So, public comment, does anyone wish to speak on any matter not on the agenda? Nope. Okay, then we will move to the minutes of the meeting of July 14th, the public session.
Point of order, Madam Chairman?
Pardon me?
We never voted to do that, do we need to do the vote? We had a motion on the second.
To, oh, I'm sorry, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, none opposed, unanimous. Thank you, Sam. I don't know what happened here.
I would move approval of the minutes of July 14th.
Second.
There it is. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. And then the minutes of the executive session of July 14th.
Just trying to think if we can do any of these releasing.
I don't believe they can be released.
Not to release.
No. So the motion would be to approve and not to release.
So move.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. Now we squeezed in with some of our favorite people here tonight from the Falmouth Road Race, because they have some new information and a couple of new activities that they would like us to hear about and, and hopefully approve. Which one of you, Matt or, right, Scott?
Scott Gielphi, Scott Gielphi from Falmouth Road Race Board of Directors. I'm here with Matt Arter, our Operations Director, and Jennifer Edwards, our Race Relations Manager. And any questions, hopefully between the three of us, we can answer them. But just a quick update on what's going on, we are three weeks away from yesterday to the race. This year's race will be at 9:00 AM, an hour earlier than last year. I don't know if that was part of our, if we had that in place when we came before you with our permit.
Yes, you did.
But anyways, hopefully with that hour early, not only will it make it safer for the runners, hopefully beat the heat, but will be cleaned up and out of everyone's way an hour early as well, so hopefully it'll be less of a need commute to the town. As far as registration goes, we are currently registered right now, 12,482 runners. Of that, 2,700 are Falmouth residents, which is up 500 than our highest Falmouth resident total before, so that's kind of neat. So of the remaining, you know, runners that we have, we'll have about 80 elites coming that will take up the rest of the, that gap. The numbers for nonprofits will probably be another 120 that have yet to register, and then that leaves us about 100 to, you know, who knows, last minute VIPs, whatnot. So, some exciting news that we have is that we have Meb Kofleski coming to run our race.
Pronounce his last name again.
Kofleski.
Thank you.
So, he won this year's Boston Marathon, he was the first American to win the Boston Marathon since 1983, and we're hoping that he's coming here to win, be the first American to win Falmouth since. Right, probably around that same time, we should know that, but we'll be rooting for him. He's a great guy, he's run Falmouth three other times, he was here a fourth time, he was injured, and then felt badly that he was injured and actually came back during the winter, visited some of our schools, ran with the kids, brought his silver medal from the Olympics. It was, he's a really neat guy, and I think he's excited to come. But in conjunction with him coming, we've created an event that's going to be that Saturday morning at 7:00 AM, and with your blessing, we're going to start promoting it. But it, it'll be a run with Meb, and it'll be about 50 to 100 runners. When we start the signup, we'll see how it works, but it'll start from the rec, head down on the road race course, two miles, come back, they'll get a chance to meet Meb and have breakfast with him at the, at the rec.
So it's just two miles?
2.5 miles, I think it is, just a short little loop back to the rec. And then we've worked with Helen at the rec, so the rec will be open for that. And the other activity is that New Balance does this with a lot of their races that they sponsor, they have a girls' night out. And what they're, they've rented a room at the Casino Wharf, they're going to have 50 to 100 runners, women, that, that sign up. They're going to go out for a 2.5 mile run, come back and then have pedicures and manicures and massages and sort of thing. So I guess it's worked out pretty well in the past and the women like it, so, so those are two activities that, that are new this year that are part of the race, so. Any questions?
Yes.
What sort of road closures do you expect needed for these?
We don't expect any road closures for either of those events, I mean, it's a small group. I know Matt and the, and the staff are working with the police department to come up with a plan, they've recommended having a lead vehicle, but, I mean, especially Meb's run at 7:00 in the morning, they'll start from the rec, they'll head down Scranton Ave and head down to the road race course and, you know.
So technically it wouldn't be a road closure, but it might be two minutes or a minute.
To cross the road, yeah.
That the road's not usable because guys are running.
It'll be sit, you know, like the Falmouth Track Club meets Wednesday nights to go for a run from the high school. You know, they'll get anywhere from 20 to 50, 60 runners, you know, or something like the Coffey O on Friday nights, you know. So, so I don't, you know, I don't foresee any road closures. So, and I don't think the police, we've talked to the police and I don't think they do as well.
And then how about the, what is the route for the women's run?
That's going to start at the Casino Wharf, heads down on the water, turns around and comes right back. Yeah, so they're, they're out about a mile and a quarter along the water.
Which way?
Out towards East Falmouth.
Oh, out towards East Falmouth.
And then head back.
And same route, same, same road?
Yeah.
Around?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Out and back.
Different routes than Meb's route.
Right. All right, does anybody have any questions about either one of those events? The Saturday morning, Saturday morning and Saturday night?
Friday night.
Friday night, right.
And Friday night is.
Friday night, Saturday morning. Okay, Peggy?
I think the only comment that I would make about it is everyone is aware of the Falmouth Road Race, everywhere. And I think that adding two short races is just part of all of the exercise for the whole weekend. And I think I congratulate you for having Meb come, and people know that he's in our town, so I'm usually the very first one to say, how many residents are going to be inconvenienced? And I don't say that when it comes to the road race. It's, it is one of our shining stars, so.
Thank you.
So to make a comment about it, I need to say that that, I kind of varied a little bit on my decisions on races and neighborhoods.
Thank you.
So would you like to make a motion to approve?
Oh, I certainly would do that.
Both, both races, as presented?
Yes.
I'll second.
And a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. Good. Well, thank you. Thanks for coming in. We'll see you on Road Race Day, if not before. Okay, now we'll move to the summary of actions and licenses. We have a request for a one-day liquor license for the Witsole Public Library on August 2nd. One-day liquor license from Gray Matter Marketing for a craft beer festival at the Cape Cod Fairgrounds on September 27th and 28th. A request for 11 one-day liquor licenses from the Falmouth Theater Guild at Highfield Theater, September 6th and 7th, and November 7th, 8th, 9th, 14th, 15th, 16th, 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. A request for a one-day liquor license for 60's Rock Show at the Cape Cod Fairgrounds on September 16th. A one-day liquor license for Obstacle Course Race 5K at the Cape Cod Fairgrounds. This is one, I think that was requested from 9:00 to 2:00. If you look at, in your, I believe that's the one, and it's, can't serve wine and beer at 9:00 in the morning, so it's actually been modified from 11:00 to 2:00, just so you know. And then the, the next is to affirm, we've already granted this, approval of a wine and malt common vixxular license for CF Main Street doing business as the Country Fair, but because of the passing of Joe Messini, one of the principals who owns the restaurant, his name had to be removed, and so we had to have an amendment to the license. So we're just reaffirming that we actually approved the license and we'll change the name. And then the last is, we also approved the liquor license for Hostmark Falmouth Management doing business as the Falmouth Holiday Inn, but the automatic amusement license was not in the request, so this is to approve the automatic amusement license. So those are items 1 through 7.
I move approval of the licenses, items 1 through 7?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just with the amendment of the obstacle.
With the amendment of the obstacle. Okay. All those in favor, oh, yes.
I'd like to make a comment about all of the organizations that are considering the fairgrounds, and I think as far as race or any activities, I'm very pleased to see the number is increasing, and they're not on our resident streets, and they're going up to the fairgrounds, and that's very good.
Good. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. And now we'll move to administrative orders. The, the first is the Visiting Nurse Association, nursing services contract with the town of Falmouth for FY 15. The grant application to mass housing for the Falmouth Hoarding Task Force. The, I want to mention that Lee Malillo, who used to be a county employee who just passed away a couple of months ago, was one of the lead people who created the hoarding task force. She was absolutely incredible, she lived in Pocasset with her husband, and she had just had twins, if you might remember, and the day after the twins were born, she had a medical issue and passed away. So Falmouth has really taken on a lot of the work and the groundwork that Lee laid when she was with the county, when they really created this and got some funding, so I think it's great that, that they're doing this.
Is there anyone here from this organization?
From the Falmouth Hoarding Task Force?
Yes.
I don't see anybody here.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Question, what is the, who is the administrative point of contact for this?
Would it be Karen Carder? Karen Carder.
Chairs our local task force, yes.
Human, human services. Okay, to authorize a town manager to file applications and execute agreements for grants and/or loans assistance from the Mass Water, Water Pollution Abatement Trust, for the wastewater treatment facility Phase 2 improvements, and for the Little Pond Sewer Service Area and Recharge Site project. Are these 0% loans, by the way? Do you know?
We have somebody here who can answer that.
Oh, Jerry. Yeah, are they going to be at 0% or do they come from the state?
They initially come as a loan.
As a loan.
We asked for a 0%.
We did.
We don't know for sure until several months down the road.
Okay.
But we, we're on the 0% list, participate getting the 0%, and if we don't, we'll probably be back in front of you.
I'm sure you will. Great, thank you. The next is to authorize a town manager to sign a 90-day contract extension until October 31st, 2014, in an amount not to exceed $18,000 with Science Wears Inc. to provide consulting services to the town. Science Wears Inc. is actually Seacarpus, and she's been working with the committee, the Water Protection Committee, for quite some time, and they need to extend her time. And last is to authorize a town manager to sign a Contract Amendment 5, in the amount of $25,000 with, with GHD. And they are, they changed all their names.
They're a wastewater consultant.
Yeah, and they are GHD. What? Nate Weeks, right. Okay. For the groundwater, so he's the principal. Okay. All right, so that's 1 through 5 in administrative orders. Any questions? Is there a motion?
I move approval, administrative orders 1 through 5.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. Now we will go to special.
Can I ask a related question about the VNA contract?
Yes.
Since there is money that's going to be spent, or we're going to spend, pay them, that's all been budgeted, right, in the town's budget, right?
Correct.
Good.
How do I get all these? And I can send them down. Yeah. We had, we just voted that, did we not?
We did.
Yeah, we did vote it, the question came after the vote.
Thank you.
Okay, next, the administrative orders, I mean, special events. The first is a recurring event, and it has been recommended by the Special Events Committee, and that is the Autumn Escape Annual Bike Truck from Surf Drive Beach Bathhouse and Parking Lot on September 26th. The second is the Falmouth Classic Car Club Dream Cruise, and they do this every year, and they, they ask us to close Shore Street Extension from Main Street to the entrance of where the, of the public, of the library's parking lot, not the whole street, just that front section of the street. And the next is the WALK MS Falmouth, the National MS Society, which is the, from Mullenhall School to Surf Drive Beach back to Mullenhall, and that is September 26th, 2014. And the last recurring recommended is West Falmouth Day, which is the West Falmouth Swift Playground, the West Ramoth Village Association, and their events on October 12th, 2014. So those are four recurring and recommended events. And Peggy?
I just noticed on the special events, on the very, on the American Lung Association, if you would go to their front page, on the weekends of the 25th, 26th, and 27th, and 28th, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, we have six events. I know they're approved, and I know that they've gone through the, through the special events, but I think that's part of the bundle. And so when they start to have that many in one weekend all throughout the town, we need to, we need to be careful with that. And I see that Zuma, well, we can, we can talk about that.
That's not on tonight, is it? With Zuma?
No.
When? At another, at another meeting?
Zuma was already approved.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I thought that was a.
Well, we'll ask to, I'm sure Diane must have a calendar of all these events.
Listed on the application, are the other events occurring?
Oh, they're already there, okay.
And as to that, just Madam Chairman, that was the subject of discussion of the working group, each event was considered independently of the other events, and the working group felt that there was capacity in the town to support them. Some of them, the bike, for example, is a one-stop at Surf Drive, the MS Walk is a walk, it walks past the Striper Fest, but it doesn't stop there, so yes, there's an awful lot going on in town that weekend, but there wasn't any particular event that the group felt it should recommend against, I just want to note that those are recommended, it's this board that approves them.
And I think that consideration was taken into the different parts of town, they are fairly spread out within the town. Those that happen within the town's environment, there aren't any that are happening close to, approximately to each other.
Those, oh, yes.
The flip side of it, the favorable side, is this is getting fast this whole season. This is bringing people from outside and.
In the fall.
Supporting our businesses. So, you know, being late in September like this, I think there's a positive aspect of it.
Okay. So, is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of the special events 1 through 4.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? One, four in favor, one opposed, the motion carries.
Correct.
And the next item, the last item, which is recurring and not recommended, I might add that the firefighters have withdrawn this application, as they are aware, and we are aware, that an event like this doesn't meet the criteria for the special event policies for July and August, and this was requested for August. So, they may be back with another date in the fall, but at least for this application, it has been withdrawn. Okay, and that brings us to public hearings. This is kind of an unusual one. This is a, how do I get the notice here? I don't think I have a notice. This is to approve the application for a change of officers or directors of an all-alcoholic common victueller license, the 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC at 30 Davis Streets in Falmouth. Is there anyone here from the 99? This has already been approved, this license. This is not to approve a license. They have changed their Board of Directors, and it's very unusual because the, they haven't put on new directors, they have just lost two directors. So, two directors are no longer on the board. But according to the ABC, that what they, what they say is that the commission will not require that a manager form be completed, nor will the commission require background information of those who are already on file. So, it's really a formality, and they're just asking that it be reviewed by the licensing authority for the town, and that we complete the Form 43, and then send it on to the ABCC and acknowledge that we are aware that two directors have resigned. So, I don't know that it even, I guess we do have to approve the application now with two less directors, so that would be the motion.
I guess, is it a hearing? Do we have to hear public comment?
It's not really that kind of a hearing.
Okay.
So, I think it's just a formality. So, I didn't open a hearing because it wasn't listed that way. So, I think we can just approve the, approve the application that lists the removal of two directors.
I move approval of the revised liquor license application for.
I know, it's bizarre. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None opposed? The motion carries. Okay. Now, we will move on to our business section, and we'd like to welcome our Police Chief, Ed Dunn, who's going to give us a quarterly report. Ed will be meeting with us quarterly to update us on the activities of the Police Department. The DPW will also be meeting with us quarterly so that we can hear reports from them on all the various activities that they provide in the town, and they also will be meeting occasionally with the Conservation Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, thank you. You're going to hear two quarters. We went back to the first of the year, so.
Oh, okay.
To make up, that's all. Because it, it all makes sense here, doing it this way. First, I'd like to talk about staffing issues in the Police Department. As you're aware, some of you are aware, may not be aware, we're approved for 66 officers and were unfunded for 58. Currently, right now, we have 53 officers. We just recently hired four new officers who will be going to the September 2014 Police Academy, which is being held in Plymouth. And they are going to be Julia Massey, who currently works as our full-time dispatcher, Christopher Livingston, Donald D. Miranda, and Michael Codfia. They'll be attending the academy in September. That being said, I would have been up to 58, because for about a week we were that way, and then I had an officer resign.
Oh.
Officer Ray McPeck, he's decided to get out of law enforcement completely. It's a shame, it's a loss for the town of Falmouth, it's a loss for law enforcement as a whole, he's a great police officer. For personal reasons, he's decided to get out of law enforcement. So, we will have one position open, and we'll be working to fill that position to get us back to that 58. However, the process is a long process, and working with the town manager, he can attest to it, it's a long process getting through and getting an officer into the academy, but we're working on that. I am happy to say that on June 19th, 2014, Officer Michael Silvestre graduated from the Boylston Academy. Currently, he is in his fifth week of field training program, which is a 15-week program. So, 10 weeks from now, he should be on his own, and will complement the department. So, that's a positive. I have one officer out on line of duty right now. We had a ATV accident, that he was injured, and I have four on administrative leave that you're currently aware of. So, that brings our staff level right now down to 49. So, it's tight with all these events, we're getting by. Also, I do anticipate over the winter, two more retirements coming up, so the hiring will continue. Dispatching, as I told you, Julia Massey, she's been a great individual in our dispatching. She had taken a civil service exam, she came down, she's a veteran, she came down, she's well-qualified to be a police officer, so she was selected and will be going to the September Academy. I've been working with the Personnel Director, Denise Coleman. We have already advertised the position, we have applicants, and very shortly we'll be doing interviews, so hopefully we'll get somebody in place to replace Julia, which is. I also have a sick, a part-time weekend position. Again, that was held by Susan Lumping, also a great employee. She has decided to leave for personal reasons also. So, we'll be filling that position very shortly. Some of you may be aware, I get out of the office once in a while, stretch my legs, and I walk Main Street, walk Woods Hole, get out to East Falmouth, and during that time, I enjoy talking to the business community, the citizens of Falmouth. I felt it was important to get a police officer back on the street. As you'll hear in a minute, our offices are really busy, and we do ask them to park a cruiser, get out, walk Main Street when that opportunity arises. However, if they're answering calls, they don't have that opportunity. So, what I did was, some of you may have seen, in June, I hired Kerry Cancela. She works up at the beach parking lot, brought her in June, and she filled in on Main Street and walked Main Street, which was a nice addition. It was so well-perceived by the citizens and the business community, I actually hired another summer officer, and his name is Officer Brian Warner. He's actually from Howard. He just graduated from the Police Intimitation Academy, which is a half-academy for police officers, and he's been walking Main Street. I have him out there from noon to 8:00 PM. I wanted to get him out there during the busy hours, the lunch hours, the dinner rush, things like that, so. So, you'll see him out on Main Street, and I think it's a great addition, and I've heard a lot of positive pieces, but I hope to continue that. Then in the fall, as we get around again, and hopefully things slow down, our officers will get out of the cruisers and walk Main Street again once in a while. But I enjoy doing it also. That brings us to the calls for services, as to why they can't get out and walk. From January 1st to June 30th, self-initiated calls, these are calls that the officers start themselves, from a motor vehicle stop to getting out, walking Main Street, to walking at our schools and everything else. We had 7,032 self-initiated calls. Dispatch calls, those are the calls that go through our dispatch, not our calls for services. We had 7,314, for a total of 14,346 calls for service from January 1st to June 30th. That's up about 7% from 2013, so we're busy. Some of the things that are keeping us busy, narcotics, drugs, it's in the paper most of the time. We've had 32 undercover buys, we've done, we've had one arrest warrant, we have 22 search warrant and GPS warrants. GPS warrants are, GPS that we put on vehicles to track them, we have to get warrants for those we just can't attach them to your car. Seizures, motor vehicles, boats, and cash, zero drug money right at the moment, cash seizures, we have seized two motor vehicles. We have 15 Superior Court indictments pending against individuals. We have purchased on an undercover one handgun, so we have another gun off the street. Some of the charges that we're charging these individuals was a distribution of a Class A, B, and D cocaine, heroin, Percocets, marijuana, possession of cocaine, heroin, Percocets, marijuana, trafficking in cocaine and heroin, and possession of a firearm, selling a firearm, and no permit for the firearm. So, those are some of the charges. Some of the narcotics that we're purchasing, oxycodone, cocaine, Percocets, and of course, heroin. Heroin seems to be the choice of drug right now. It's very inexpensive, and it's plaguing our country, it really is. But we're working on it. As you remember, we had a meth lab, sorry to say, we had our first meth lab on Cape Cod, but with a joint effort between the Barnstable Police Department, Falmouth Police Department, and the DEA, we were able to put an end to that very, very quickly. So, that, all that is pending in court, so hopefully we won't see that again. I'm happy to say that we were able to hold our first Citizens Police Academy in seven years. A lot of that got stopped because of the finances, but on, in setting in May, we held our 13th Citizens Police Academy. On Wednesday night, it was Wednesday night, for about three hours, and we graduated 27 individuals, citizens of Falmouth, on June 25th, 2014, which, since we have started the Police, Citizens Police Academy in this department, we've graduated a total of 398 citizens, who now have shared the experience with law enforcement, have a better understanding of how their police department works. I'm hoping this fall to hold another one, and one another one in the spring. It really, really does open up your eyes to law enforcement. We even had some, Donald D. Miranda, for instance, he attended the class anticipating being a police officer someday. He was on the civil service list, he just wanted to get a feel whether or not he'd even like it, so he attended that. We also had a police officer's wife attend, because she wanted to know what her husband went through every day. She now has a better understanding of the job, so it was, it was an eye-opener for a lot of people, so that was great. So, but I look forward to holding two more this year, and I invite anybody in the board and any citizen of Falmouth that will watch for the advertisements, and would love to have you attend. Events. Our summers are full of events. I've been happy to say the 4th of July, the Street Fair and the Barnstable County Fair went off without a hitch. We just finished up the Barnstable County Fair the other night, and everything went well. The 4th of July was still playing with our traffic plan. It was better this year, it's getting better every year, and we'll continue to do that. I think if you were out late that night, you saw the traffic did seem to move, and we're going to continue working with that. Our upcoming events, of course, the Falmouth Road Race, we are prepared. We'll be working with our sister agencies from the State Police, FBI, Sheriff's Department to make that a safe event. Continuing, that plan is pretty much done, and we're prepared. The events you just heard about tonight just approved, we just found out about also, and we're working to make those a successful event also. An event that I'm happy to talk about and proud of is on August 5th, I'd like you all mark your calendar for that, that is our Falmouth Police Open House slash National Night Out. Gives you an opportunity to come to the Police Department and tour your Police Department, look at all the equipment that your tax dollars paid for, and we'll even feed you hot dogs, hamburgers, and pizzas. This year, we have, we've added ice cream and popcorn, so. It was a successful event last year, I think it was the, last year was on the night of the playoffs, we had to kind of share everything with the Commodores, so this year, I think we'll have it to ourselves, I hope. And again, I invite all the board members and the citizens of Falmouth to please attend that, so.
What's the time?
It starts sometime around 5:00. And that will be, we'll be posting that real soon, you'll see it on our electronic signs, and we'll have it out in the paper also. So, I'm willing to answer any questions for you.
Just questions? Becky?
What is the length of time that our new hires are at the academy?
It's 22 weeks.
Okay.
It's 22 weeks in the academy, and then it's a 15-week field training program. It takes us close to a year to get a new candidate on the road.
And do we finance any of that for the people?
We purchase their uniforms, and we supply them with a vehicle and gas, but they have to pay for the academy themselves.
Okay.
All right.
We used to pay for the academy, and we had them sign a, an agreement that if they left over a certain period of time, they would reimburse the town. But over the years, most towns now are having the candidate pay for the academy. But we, like I said, we pay for the uniform and pay for the transportation.
And must you be a graduate of the academy to be a police, on the police force in Falmouth?
Yes.
Okay.
As well as passing a psychological and a physical and a PET by the state.
Not your ideal number of police members on the police force, but what number, if we increased it, do you think would really make a difference? Where, I know funding right now at 58, is there a number that you'd say, boy, if we could be funding that, I really think we could get more people on the street, not or doing detective work?
I'd like to see us back to 66.
Sure.
That would be, that would be the ideal, if you want to talk about ideal, because here's, here's what happened in the department. Back in 2008, we had seven people in the detective division, right now I have three.
Yeah.
So, we have to put those people back on the road. 64 would be a good number. 66 would be ideal, because by getting those, by getting those numbers, they're all going to be on the street, I can then put people back in detectives. Because right now, we are picking and choosing the cases for follow-ups. We follow up on everything that we can, but with the amount of cases, we have to prioritize, and eventually we'll get down to.
But even from a budget point of view, if we went up to 60 or 61 for next year, there's no way we're going to be able to get up to 60 or 61, because it takes so long, I mean, by that fiscal year, because it takes so long to actually get them through the academy, get them off the civil service list, and get them here.
Absolutely.
And we already have vacancies expected.
Absolutely. And I'm also looking, looking for taking laterals also, like we've done in the past, and some of the laterals that we have have worked out very, very well. They're just police officers who want to relocate, fully trained. You do a very short field training program with them, so they understand how our paperwork is done, how our town is, and how we handle calls, and we can get them right in, right onto the street within, within a month.
Okay.
So, we're looking at that too, but yeah, 62 would be a good number, 61, get us, get us back into the 60s.
Is there anything special that's holding us back, that they're not coming here to work in Falmouth?
I don't think so, no. No, I don't. Falmouth is a good town, you know, we have the education. I think back when we lost a lot of people, it had to do with the Quinn Bill, but through negotiations, all those, all those situations have been straightened out as far as the education and center program, and the officers are happy with that.
And the backup question is, is our salary competitive?
I believe it is.
Okay.
It needs to go up a little bit, but we're not too far off. We're not on the bottom.
Any other questions? Well, we're very proud of our Police Department Chief, Amy, thank you.
Thank you.
For all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For all your efforts.
Hmm? Thank you.
I will. Thanks, Chief.
Okay. The next item is a, has been a request made. You know we have a traffic advisory committee? That's a committee that's, is, is part of the charter, so it isn't like an ad hoc committee. And this was a request from a resident, is it the resident here by, yes, you're here, has requested a stop sign at the intersection of Worcester, Worcester Court, Worcester Avenue, yeah, and Nantucket Avenue. I think some of you know, if you, if you go Worcester Avenue from the Heights Road, you know, you go out at the CBS at the very end at the stoplight there, Jones Road intersection. So, I, I asked the town manager to ask the traffic advisory committee to give us a recommendation. I also asked that they give us information on the number of accidents that may have occurred at that intersection to help us in, make this decision. So, maybe we could ask, tell me your name again.
Tim Noonan.
Yeah, Tim Noonan. If you would like to come to the lectern and tell us why you, why you are requesting If you would like to come to the lectern and tell us why you, why you are requesting this.
Well, I'm requesting it because, Tim Doonan is my name, thank you for having me. Requesting it because there's accidents, and I, you know, just in June, I think there were three that I witnessed. There's a lot of young children, and, you know, they're on the bikes, they're scooters, it's nerve-wracking when you're there. You know, coming up from the beach towards CBS, you know, it's a, it's a straightaway, and cars fly through it, and often they don't stop at the second stop sign. And same coming towards the beach, it's just a very high-traffic area, particularly in the summertime, and it's a safety issue, quite honestly. There's stop signs at every single intersection on Worcester Avenue, Worcester Court, except that intersection. So I don't think it's an unreasonable request.
Becky?
Well, I went over and I parked, and I looked around, and on Nantucket, that is going east and west, which would be the second street coming up from the beach, and Worcester Ave going north and south, I saw a stop sign at Nantucket and Worcester Court going both directions.
Right.
And what is it you're saying that?
Stop signs are on Nantucket Ave, I'm talking about a stop sign, but they're on Worcester Ave.
So they're four-way stops.
It'd be a three-way stop, because it's a one-way.
One-way, yeah.
So the issue is, the cars pick up speed on Worcester Avenue and Worcester Court, okay? The issue isn't side streets, because those are heavy populated with cars and kids, that's not the issue. It's the, it's the, that straightway, that's the road I'm talking about. So adding a stop sign coming from the beach on the corner, so it would be a three-way, and then going towards the beach, it would be a three-way. So the issue isn't Nantucket Ave, it's just Worcester Ave, I want the stop sign. Does that make sense?
It does make sense in, in what you're saying, and I talked to people as they were in the neighborhood, and they didn't know there was any kind of a problem there, and they're year-round. That was my, that's, and I mean, that's just, I'm just passing that on to you, that, and you said there were three accidents in June, right, right at that, and they, I asked that also, and.
You got some information, didn't you?
I have information, how much? I'm just saying that as I talked to the people in the area and I looked at it, I just, it just didn't.
Well, here's, here's what the traffic advisory committee had to say. First of all, they said that they, they searched the system for any motor vehicle crashes at this intersection in the last five years, and it yielded no results. Now, maybe they were not reportable accidents, or they weren't, I, I don't know, but there wasn't any accident that was listed into, in the system.
Well, there were cops that were there.
There were cops there?
Sure. Yeah, two of them.
But that was recently?
In June.
In June, so well, maybe it hadn't, I don't know, but that's what they said. The other thing they suggested was that there's some vegetation that could be cut back. I noticed, I, when I go up Worcester Court, Worcester Avenue like that, I always have to slow down and almost come to a stop, because you can't see around the vegetation. And the people who live on some of those corners have hedges that are really, that are high, and you can't see over them, so you have to almost get halfway into the intersection before you can tell if someone's coming from the other way. So that's one issue, is the vegetation. So I think, well, the traffic advisory committee said they would not recommend it for two reasons. They didn't feel that, they didn't believe that the, based on their data, that it was busy enough to warrant a stop sign, and they were hesitant to recommend it, because, he said, the driver's manual stipulates when operators should stop at intersections without stop signs, and people apparently are not even following the driver's manual. I mean, probably the last time we saw it is when we got a driver's license or something, I don't know. But they also recommended that the owners who own property at the corners cut back on the vegetation, and then perhaps monitor it for a little bit longer.
The hedges are on the town property, in the, in the grass strip, that's town property.
No, I'm not thinking about grass strip, I was thinking, if you're heading towards Route twenty-eight, it's on the right-hand side that you can't see. You can see the traffic coming from the left, but not from the right, if you're heading towards Route twenty-eight. At least that, that's my experience.
So if you're heading away, away from the beach.
Away from the beach.
The Heights Beach, there are no shrubs there, on that, on that section by the water. It's the second after Nantucket where the shrubs are. And I'm suggesting we have a stop sign right, right there, so.
Right there at the corner.
Yeah. In that second, if you go that, that courtyard, there's no shrubs there, first courtyard by the beach. The shrubs start at the second courtyard.
So when you come up from the, from Grand Avenue, which intersection is Nantucket?
First one.
The first, it's the first, the first one?
And there, on that strip of road, there are no shrubs, they start in the second piece. So when I went to the traffic advisory in November, we talked through that, and that was, you know, the realization.
So have you met with the traffic advisor?
Yeah, I met with them in November, and I think there were five people and four approved and one didn't, so I'm kind of surprised to hear that, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's a stop sign, it's a safety issue, guys, I really don't, every other intersection on that road has one.
That's one point that I find a little confusing, the traffic advisory committee, for them to say it's not busy enough for a stop sign at this one, but we have one in every single intersection. Why do we have those at that intersection if it's not busy enough for one at this intersection, which?
That's a very good question.
And the intersections are fifty yards apart.
Right, it's very inconsistent that every single one has one, but that one. And often, I think many people who kind of know those intersections, stop at that one because they expect it, and then are surprised there's not a stop sign, because they're so used to, unless they drive it every day, and then they say, oh, yeah, there's not one there, but.
Yeah, it's, you gotta, you know, it's, it's a dangerous spot.
Sam?
Yeah, I just had a, a question about how much recreational activity is actually taking place in that grassy mall area.
Is, is, you know, that hotel or the timeshare, is right now that it's kids, parents playing baseball, frisbee in there, quite a bit.
Yeah, that's, that's my.
It's a, it's a, it's a nice area.
Right.
And parents are out there with their kids all the time, kids are riding their bikes there all the time. It's just kids cut through the Heights Ballpark there all the time, people walking dogs all the time, and cars, really, it's a, it's a, something, something bad's gonna happen. And I'm just asking for some kids' consistency with the stop signs that are on the rest of the road. It's a safety issue, it really is.
Becky?
Do you observe that the traffic that is going east is doing it for a cut-through as such, instead of using Grand Avenue? Do you look at it as coming that way?
Yeah, no, I don't, I mean, this, that's not really a cut-through, because again, it's, that, that Nantucket Ave that you're referring to is not a, you know, it's not a well-traveled road compared to Grand Ave. Now, Grand Ave, you can exit right off the Heights.
Yeah.
Just, you have McDougles, and a lot of cars do that, sure. But, you know, the focus on Nantucket Ave, it's.
It's not as well-traveled.
Certainly not, not at all. Compared to Grand Ave, yeah, no, it's not as wide, you know, and often, when there's a construction truck on there, you know, you have to pull over. Whereas Grand Ave is a, as you know, a pretty good thoroughway. And that's really the entrance into that area. So, you know, it would, it's, I think it's a common sense move, just to have consistency.
I think there is an argument for consistency, clearly, because there, it is, you have to look each, when you're driving, when you're driving toward twenty, which is, would be west, right, towards twenty-eight?
I second understand, you know, why not.
Did the traffic advisory committee know about the other stop signs?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we talked about it, and I think that was part of the rationale. It was like four to one, it was, sure, they knew about it, and we talked about it.
So what was your impression when you were speaking with the traffic advisory committee? Did they seem supportive to your request, or?
In fact, the reason I'm here is because they approved it, and it has to come to this group for final authorization. They could have just told me, you know, no.
Oh, but they didn't say no?
They didn't, no, they approved it.
According to their minutes, it doesn't say, say, a approval, it says the recommendations refer to selectmen, request DPW trim vegetation. So I don't get the impression that they're saying no or yes, but they're saying it's in our hands.
And that, that.
I don't like to necessarily go against what our committees say, and if they haven't made a negative recommendation, I would, I would feel comfortable.
But then when we, when we went back to them and said, they, they gave their reasons why they would not, do you have a copy of this? Yeah?
I'm trying to find the copy of their minutes in which they actually had that discussion, because certainly in the minutes that Tim was at, in which they said they were going to refer to us, and it never did get to refer to us until now, yet they had another discussion in which he was, wasn't included, I would like to see the minutes from that meeting in which that happened, because I would feel a little bit awkward that their minutes in which it was discussed that Tim was invited to do not say a negative recommendation, just says recommend, refer to selectmen, this is the minutes that we have from December, from November eighteenth.
Well, they said, it says though, oh, the town manager approved.
I approved bringing it to the board.
Oh, bringing it to the board. Refer to the selectmen, request vegetation. When any regulatory sign of payment marking is installed, a copy of this request should be noted to the police department, and that's all there is.
The December sixteenth minutes say, discuss adding a stop sign on Worcester Avenue, Nantucket Ave. TAC, the traffic advisory committee, refer to selectmen, request, request trim vegetation, and town manager agrees with recommendation, refer party to selectmen. According to their minutes, they agreed to the trim vegetation and referred the other question to stop sign to us, without a negative determination.
And they trimmed the vegetation every Fourth of July in rural.
So then, I would say, based on their minutes and what we have here, that it's really up to us.
There wasn't any vote on whether.
Not in their minutes. It, they, it says that they, their recommendation is to refer to the selectmen and request that the DPW trim the vegetation. That was their decision.
Madam Chair, if I could just to interject, the, there seemed to be some discrepancy on the issue of accident data. Officer Porter indicated there's been no evidence of any accidents for the past five years, however, it was noted, perhaps this is something much more recent. Given that, and the fact that traffic task force met way back in November, it might be helpful to the board to have them take another look at this, based on potentially some updated accident data, and that issue of consistency with other stop signs.
And to make a specific recommendation.
Yeah.
Right, and to vote a recommendation on erecting or not erecting a stop sign to the board.
You know, I appreciate that, Mr. Suso, but twice they've said refer to selectmen, twice they've said in their minutes they want us to decide.
I just don't think they're doing their job when they do that, frankly, selectmen jobs.
Quite honestly, I think you guys need to do your job.
Their job is to recommend.
Yeah, and they're not recommending.
This has been going on for seven months, you know, I'm not doing it just on a whim. It's, it's dangerous, it's a safety issue, this is board, you know.
My preference, as opposed to telling them to go back and do their job, is that we do it for them, for the citizen who has waited seven months doing the process the way he has, and.
I think we have to follow the process, the process, that, the reason we have a traffic advisory committee is to advise the selectmen. Right now, we don't have updated information, we don't have a recommendation, we don't have the tools to make the decision.
I would be all, I mean, I will make the motion if we vote it down, but I would make the motion to go ahead and approve the stop sign at this intersection.
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay. So let's discuss the motion then. Sam?
Yeah, I, in this area, so much pedestrian, bicycle, children activities on that green area, that it seems to me appropriate to keep slowing the traffic down as they go through. That's why I support this motion. It's, it's not a typical area in a neighborhood because of all the beach activity and all of the rental properties in the area. That's why I think we should go ahead and decide it. I, I don't see any of that discussed, we haven't been provided any information really in terms of the, the factors considered, other than vegetation by the traffic advisory committee.
I, I will say, this seldom ever comes up, that someone requests a stop sign, and I could probably say, maybe twice in all the years I've been on the board, has there ever been a request for a stop sign? And of course, we didn't always have a traffic advisory committee either in previous years. But I do want to say, I think one of the, the really important things is, and I noticed that too, is that it is the one street without a stop sign, so that when you're driving up, you have to remember that if there isn't one there, there is one at the next intersection and the one after that, so it isn't consistent. And I think that that lack of consistency, I think bears some importance on this.
The other thing, and some of their other, there have been some of the stop signs requested in their minutes, in which when they took other action. One was to not put up a stop sign, but recommend additional police enforcement.
Mm-hmm.
Another one was, and so this time, their recommendation is refer to us, that is their recommendation.
Becky?
If this process hadn't happened, how would you get a stop sign? What is the process Falmouth does?
That's the process, is to go to the traffic advisory committee.
So all the, all the stop signs I'm looking at, they have gone to the traffic advisory, and they have made the decision and voted, and the stop sign went up.
Not every single one, I think, I don't think, as I said, we haven't had, we haven't had a request in a long time, so, so I would say, does that mean that the traffic advisory committee has been approving stop signs all along? Or have there not been any approvals, because we haven't had any approvals? I mean, I.
I'm not aware of any stop signs, they specifically recommend during my shift tenure.
I don't think, I don't think we've had, yeah, I'll get to you in a minute, Mark. I don't think we, I don't think we've had any requests for stop signs at the, in a very long time.
Well, I certainly have heard requests, just personally, on anything on Mare Vista, anything on Seacoast shores. I mean, people talk about those two areas in town that would love to have stop signs.
Really?
And, and from twenty-eight all the way down, and every time, they're denied, and it's always been a cost issue. So I'm asking, when there is so much discussion on one corner, and I understand, we always need stop signs, we always need stop signs, it's the decision of which areas in town have an incidence of more problems, and Nantucket, I mean, I don't have any problem with this, but I think about all the places that I would say where we need a stop sign. So I'm, I'm just coming back of how the process went on.
You're right, so why does this come to us when all the other requests never happen?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
That's your point. Why are we getting this request?
Well, because I think I followed the process. I called the police station, and I said I want to put up a stop sign, and they said the process is go to the TAC, they will approve or deny it. I went to the TAC in November, they motioned it to this group.
In November?
In November, so.
And this is now July?
I can't, I can't answer your question, it's a, it's a good question, but I know that I followed the process with Officer Porter, and here I am, you know, eight months later.
And the only reason it came to us is because you came back.
Because I came back, because, yeah, exactly, because I've been persistent, you know, and the fact that, you know, I think you were going down, you know, there's a lot of other places in town that deserve a stop sign, I probably agree, but that's not a reason not to put one here.
Mr. Fitteren, you wanted to comment?
Hi, good to meet you. Mark Fitteren, Precinct Six. I'm quite familiar with this stretch of road. Our house is actually the next intersection up there. In the old days, there wasn't a Sunday that went by that we'd be eating dinner and we would see someone run through the stop sign. But you're, what you're asking for, in effect, is a four-way stop sign, or a four-way stop. Well, it's, in effect, it's a one-way road, it's like a four-way stop sign.
Yeah, so it's a one-way road.
Yeah, but I mean, it's the same as a four-way stop sign.
Nantucket is not a one-way, it's.
Grand is.
No, Grand, Worcester Court is one-way.
Oh, Worcester's a one, oh, Worcester's a one.
But you can go from Grand Ave all the way to Stop and Shop, and there are no four-way stops. Nantucket is the smallest street. Stop signs don't work in that area, because they just run through them anyway. But if you allow that stop sign on that smallest intersection, you're opening up a can of worms. I mean, I'm gonna come in here and ask for one on Grand Ave North, and I know the people on Jericho Path are gonna want one, because there's accidents there, and I have seen accidents where you're talking about, on both sides of the road, and they happen on Grand Ave North and Worcester Court. But I think you're, it's, it's kind of a special purpose, and if you let him have that, everybody on the street's gonna want a four-way stop, that's.
So there's already a stop sign on Nantucket?
Every one of those intersections has a stopway on one of the two streets.
On one of the two streets.
So this would make that intersection special, and in reality, it's the smallest intersection on that whole street.
It's the only one that doesn't have a stop sign on Worcester Ave, and that's the issue, because that's the road where the cars pick up speed.
So now the other road, now the others have stop signs on the cross signs, crossroads?
No, I think he's right.
Well, you know.
It's all one or the other.
Well, it's all Grand, nothing on the cross.
It's Worcester Ave.
I'm sorry, Worcester Ave, right.
Worcester Ave, yeah.
Worcester Court, another point.
Worcester Ave is the first two blocks up from the beach. Worcester Ave turns into Worcester Court. And it's the only intersection that doesn't have a stop sign on Worcester Ave.
The problem with not following the process, I'm sorry, of the traffic advisory committee, is just what Mark's saying, just what Becky's saying.
This is a bigger problem than I think for us, it's a bigger problem.
I respectfully disagree. I did follow the process, okay? I called up the police station back in November. I went to the TAC.
I think you're misunderstanding my comment.
No, I don't think that's what you-
I'm saying, the traffic advisory committee did not make a recommendation.
They did make a recommendation. They recommended to the board of selectmen to make a decision.
They referred it, they did not make a recommendation, yes or no?
Well-
Exactly right. Their decision was to send it to this group to make the decision. I asked that question specifically.
Here's what I, this is what I'm thinking at this point, is that this, this is, this is really a traffic issue. I don't think it's really an issue for the board of selectmen. I think these things ought to be handled properly through the police department and through the town manager's office. I think for us to get involved in hearing requests for stop signs could be, we could be opening up a can of worms. Now, what, and not that I don't recognize that for Mr. Dunin, this is a real problem, but what I'd like to suggest, and maybe, I don't want to take a whole lot of time here, but send this back to the traffic advisory committee, put it back on our agenda two weeks from today, and have them resolve this issue, and not, and make the right decisions, so that we don't, that we can get a report back that the, that the issue has been resolved, that the traffic committee has made a decision, they've made a determination, and that they're going to report back to us what decision they've made. Because I think for us to deal with stop signs, I don't know how, maybe you want to comment on this, but it seems to me that for the selectmen to have to get in a position where we have to decide when it's appropriate to have a stop sign at an intersection or not, is way beyond our capacity to really understand all the traffic issues involved, when there, as Mark said, and I know, that there are many people around who would love to have a stop sign, and they can never get one. So I think we are, in a way, creating a new precedent that we will now take the votes on stop signs. I don't think that we should be doing that.
I would be okay with tailoring-
I think it should be the chief or somebody-
I'd be okay with tailoring my motion for two weeks. And if the traffic advisory committee hasn't dealt with it by then, then, then we decide. But I think, I mean, I understand the process, but they have really fallen down the process, that if in December, they voted to refer to us, and never communicated with us this issue, which is what happened, is they voted to refer it, but didn't actually follow through on referring it to us. The only reason it came back to us is because Mr. Dunin came back to us and said, what's happened? And nothing.
Yeah, I need a decision, is what he said.
Yeah, I think we need to go a step further. I think we need a criteria that would be applied to every intersection to decide when the stop sign is appropriate and when it's not. And I think that is a policy decision that we could approve, right?
That we could make sure, but not approving each individual stop sign.
I quite agree with you. But I would like to see at least a criteria proposed for how they would make that decision, because we're hearing, and I think justifiably so, there are going to be a lot of people putting forth requests for stop signs. Well, how does the traffic advisory committee deal with that? If they don't have some criteria, and I don't think accident rates is the legitimate criteria. It needs to be something where we anticipate the risk and are able to evaluate it in each separate case.
Do they meet between now and two weeks, number one? And number two, can we get updated figures from the police up through the June-
We can request that they meet within the next week, so that they can, they can satisfy this board, so that-
If they're able to, yes, if they're able to get a quorum to meet. Be happy to check on that. If the board would be comfortable, I'd be happy to inquire and request of them that they, that they meet, put this on their agenda on their next available meeting, and report back immediately to the board.
But see, if we don't take it up in two weeks, then it's a month before we deal with this. That's a long time to wait to get a resolution, I think. So I would like to ask that they do something between now and our next meeting, so that somebody can act on this.
Happy to transmit that request from the board.
Okay. Mr. Fitterin?
I believe they always, they already have a formula. If you analyze any one of those intersections, or almost any intersection in town, they seem to put the stop sign on the least traveled artery. Nantucket is the least traveled artery. It has the stop sign. When you get to Worcester Court and Grand Ave North, Worcester Court is the least traveled artery. When you get up to Jericho Path and Worcester Court, again, Worcester Court's the least traveled artery, so it has the stop sign. It kind of makes sense. I mean, people don't, especially in the summer, people just blow through. Their brains are on vacation, too.
Thanks for your comments. All right, so I think we're in agreement that we're going to send it back to the traffic advisory committee, get them to make this assessment, and that we want, we're going to have it on our agenda in two weeks, and we would like a recommendation from them. Okay?
If they recommend installing it, do we have to approve it?
Yes.
We do.
What? Yeah.
Right, this board will need to approve it.
All right. Mr. Dunin?
So, what, I come back in two weeks now?
Two weeks.
And do we know when, if they'll meet, to your point?
I don't know. All I can do is make the request. I'm happy to do that on behalf of the board of selectmen.
So they have, they've heard all your information, a lot of boards can just take a roll call vote. That's what's asked for. I'm not sure what they're able to do.
Hmm? That's, I'm sorry, what?
I was just, he was asking when he has to come back, and I'm saying, they already have the hearing, the information. All they need to-
Maybe they don't even have to meet. Maybe they can just make their recommendation. We want a recommendation from them, and, because we are going to have it on our agenda in two weeks.
But they can't make that recommendation without having an open meeting?
Well, maybe they've, well, that's true, yeah, so-
And if they've had an open meeting without informing Mr. Dunin that they have this issue and discussed it, I would have a problem with that.
Well, well, it's been sitting in the committee since, when, last November?
Right.
So, let's get it over with.
And we can make the decision without the recommendation.
Yes, we can. If we don't get one, then we can make it.
In two weeks, I come back here?
Well, you'll see the agenda, it'll be posted, yeah.
Is that a yes or a no, two weeks? I just got to plan the schedule there. Will I be back in two weeks?
Well, we meet two weeks from tonight.
And this will be on the agenda?
It'll be on the agenda.
Yes.
Unless it's already resolved over there. They may make a decision, because-
But I thought we just said that they can't make a decision without our, the-
Well, see-
So I'm, I mean, I'm asking that it be on our agenda in two weeks.
All right, it's on our agenda in two weeks, either way.
Right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your persistence.
Okay, the next is a request for three off-premise signs. This is the East Falmouth Village Association. They're having their annual meeting coming up, I think, fairly soon. And they want to just put a few signs up to let people know about the annual meeting. That's what this is.
And, again, the start date is two days ago.
Start date, July twenty-sixth, end, July thirty-first. Well, so they now have, now they have two days, no, they have three days, the twenty-nine, the twenty-nine thirtieth and thirty-first.
Well, this is the second time, and I have a little bit of objection with us approving something that people have already started doing. We had the same thing with the Lobster Roll Sale last week.
Oh, it's St. Bartobas?
You know, maybe, I wish we could get away about this thing. People are having these events every year, they make their requests every year. Granted, we only meet every two weeks, but if they could get things done in time, so we can approve it, do have the time, they'd like to start putting up their signs.
So maybe when we, then they reform that it's been approved, that we let them know that we would appreciate their providing us with this information. They have the date here, but the event is July thirty-first.
They submitted their application on July eleventh.
On the eleventh. But that's because we only meet every other week. They have to do better. So we'll have to ask people to please plan ahead.
I have approval of the signs for the Falmouth Villages Association.
Second.
Any, for any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous. Okay, Bike Ways Committee. There are two positions opened, and the terms end on June thirtieth, 2017, and the first applicant is Chris McGuire. Yes, would you like to, would you like to come and tell us why you're interested in the Bike Ways Committee and-
Sure, yeah, hi. I'm a parent of a couple of kids who are at Mullen Way, so they're still pretty small people. And we've started to, I live on Mullen, uh-
Mullen Way?
Mullen Way. I guess my kids are at Mullen Way, I misspoke. And we've started to bike to school at the end of this year, and made use of the new cut-through from the bike path to Cathy Lee Bates, which is the new connector that exists right there. And I, when, this spring, there wasn't a crosswalk there yet. And so I emailed the Bike Ways Committee, and I said, like, look, we've been doing this, but there's no crosswalk. Wouldn't it be great? And the chairman, you know, they suggested I talk to somebody, and that crosswalk had, of course, been requested long ago, and, and got put on there. And anyway, so they said, hey, you know, we'd like to have a parent like you on the Bike Ways Committee, would you like to join? So-
See what it gets.
Yeah, exactly. Putting your opinion out there, it gets you. So I'm just an interested parent and bicyclist, like many people.
Great. And they, they ride their bikes to school?
The kids, well, I mean, we did a few times this spring. I mean, they're getting their kindergarten and first grade, so they're just getting to the ride the bikes to school age.
Oh, that's great.
But so I rode with them a couple times. Yeah, it's an easy bike ride for us.
Any questions for Mr. McGuire?
Well, I think, I think you've answered everything I've thought about, that not everyone would say, I'll be on the Bike Ways Committee. So I can see what is driving you as far as the safety of the children, and, and I give you a lot of credit for sticking to that each day, or however they would go to school. But I think it's a good committee, and I think that when you go to work and you're on the bike committee, you're in a beautiful place. So, I certainly wouldn't have anything negative to say about someone who understands that.
Great, thanks.
Do you know who's on the committee, or have you been to any of their meetings?
Uh, I do know, I actually know the new chairman, Scott, a little bit, and I know another one of the committee members, Samara, who's somebody who I work with periodically. And I've talked with them a little bit about the bike committee. I haven't been to any of the meetings before, though.
Do you have some idea of what it was like to work with that?
Yeah, and, well, I have some idea, and I understand that this is a good time to join the Bike Ways Committee, because they're getting ready to, you know, dig deeper into looking at how biking happens in Falmouth in this fall, so.
And if we're fortunate, we should get some money from the state? We haven't heard yet, you haven't?
Yes, Madam Chair, if we are fortunate, then the, the manner in which the funds are expended is set by the, you know, by the approvals of the legislature. If we are fortunate enough to have that, we should know by the end of the month.
Good.
Great.
Good. Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay.
Should we need approval? Need a motion?
A motion to approve? Well, we have one more interview.
Okay.
We do have two positions, but we can vote them all at the same time. So, thank you very much, Mr. McGuire.
Thank you.
Pamela Rustine, Rustine or Rothstein? I never know which. Good evening.
Good evening.
And you're a bike rider, too?
I am, indeed.
Of course, so you wouldn't be interested, right? So tell us about your interest in the Bike Ways Committee.
I'm a resident of Falmouth for twenty years. I've always been an avid bicyclist, and an educator, and parent who raised her children here, and somebody who's lived abroad in places where bike paths are an integral part of city and transportation, and a terrific alternative to private car use. So I'm an advocate for helping our town improve its ability to get people around, to improve our ability to attract people here, and to have safe and feasible bike ways, both bike path and more bike possibilities on streets, which I've long felt and continue to feel are unsafe. There are many people out on the streets biking, hazarding, driving around in a car at this time of the year. So I've long had an eye on serving on the committee. I know Ed Rowan on the committee, and I'm a member of the Falmouth Dog Park Committee and helped establish that in my work. I work on committees all the time, so I'm aware of that. But I'm eager to help make a difference at a time that the bike path has been improved and extended, and we're really looking at integrating it into the city, into the town more, which is very important. Safety is a big concern. Yes.
There are also concerns for the neighbors of the bike path. I understand you live fairly close to where it goes through there. So as someone who could also be aware of what a neighbor feels to the kind of noise that you do get from bike traffic, I would think that would be another experience that you could add to it.
Sure, we're, we're not right on it, we're literally, we're through the woods and to it, but absolutely, I'm aware of that, and I'm on it constantly, and I'm a steward with the Falmouth, friends of Falmouth Bike Ways.
Any other questions?
And I'd love to be able to bike to work, which I don't feel is safe to do. And I think that there are more people in town who would do that if we had better, better signage, better facilities, and as we move forward as a town, take bikes into consideration all the time.
I guess one pet peeve I will bring up of some bicyclists who are not used to using the bike path, but are who are using the bike ways as their exercise regime, and don't necessarily feel that the stop signs and other traffic signals govern them.
I'm with you.
Surely there's a stop sign in front of my house. It's right at the bottom of a hill, and for a bike to stop, you're going to have to really stop where you're going, and they just choose not to.
Absolutely.
And sometimes it's a slow-rolling stop, sometimes it's straight through, and I'm not sure whether that's something the Bike Ways Committee can also do to help educate that the bicyclists also have a responsibility to be good users of the roads, in addition to the drivers being respectful of the bikers.
That's why I mentioned that I, like you, am an educator, and that's a huge part of getting people to follow the rules and understand that they're multi, it's a multi-use path. I'm not saying it's not just a bike path, so.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? Becky?
I would just comment that, over on Monot Road, as a driver in the car, I am continued, it's an obstacle course, and, and it starts very early in the morning, and it goes until it's dark. And I wonder, is there ever an idea that anyone who is going to ride a bike in Falmouth have some type of card that says they have read all of the rules of what is the right and wrong thing to do while you're on a bicycle? And it's such a beautiful area, I understand why they're there. But I always thought, if they all had the same information-
I wish I could ask the same of the drivers. I think, I think it is a question of education, of how do you, how do we share the roads? Absolutely, I think signage is a big part of that. I think raising public awareness is part of that, forums, drivers who are not used to sharing the road. And our roads are barely designed for two cars, frankly.
So, so what is your solution, just personally? What do you-
Personally, I think it's partly a question of education, as you said. I don't know that we're going to license people, but I think making them aware of the rules.
Oh, I don't want to cause license. I just think if they, if everyone had, they had something that they read, and they all read it.
Well, I think that the bigger problem is that the roads are not properly designed to accommodate bicyclists, pedestrians, and cars. And that's something that the town needs to address.
Okay.
That's, that's the long term of the vision.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Is there a motion?
I would move to appoint Pamela Rustine and Christopher McGuire to the Bike Ways Committee, term ending June thirtieth, 2017. Is that correct?
Correct.
Second.
Right. Any discussion on the motions? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, the, the next one is the EDC, and we interviewed these two applicants last week. There's one vacancy, and we have two applicants, Kevin Murphy and Jay Savala. You may remember that the EDIC created a few years ago some bylaws, and we have been notified by Town Council that... I'll find it.
We don't have the authority.
Or maybe you've seen it. Yes, I have asked Town Council to comment on the EDIC and the Falmouth Home Rule Charter, because the EDIC is not an appointed town board as used in the charter. It's a corporation. It was created when town meeting voted to accept general laws, Chapter 121(c), and create an EDIC, which is defined as a public body politic and corporate, herein after referred to as a corporation, quote, unquote. So the EDIC has a separate legal existence from the town, and its powers and duties are conferred upon it by the general laws, not by a town bylaw or a town meeting vote, which is in Section 5 of the Charter. Its relationship to the town is similar to that of a housing authority. It performs a governmental function, but remains a separate and distinct entity. Its budget is not subject to town meeting appropriation. Its receipts are not deposited into the general fund. It may own real property in its own name, subject only to its jurisdiction. While its members are subject to the Conflict of Interests Law, and its meetings are subject to the Open Meeting Law and the Public Records Law, the EDIC remains a separate entity and is not a town board or committee, as a term is used in the Charter. Now, that sounds kind of... Anyway, the upshot of it is, is that the EDIC is created by the general laws. It's not created by the town. But under the general laws, the selectmen appoint the members to the EDIC, and the legislation clearly states that there shall be seven members of the EDIC, and they shall each represent certain aspects of the community. One shall be experienced in financial matters. One shall be experienced in real estate. One shall be knowledgeable of the low-income community and be able to represent the low-income community on the board. One can be either a selectman or someone appointed by the selectmen. So that takes care of five of the members. So the EDIC wanted to increase their membership from seven to nine, but the general laws don't allow for that, and the general laws supersede the bylaws of the EDIC. So really, we're only here tonight to appoint one member, because there is one vacancy, according to the general laws. So neither one of the candidates are here tonight, but I think they knew that we were going to appoint tonight, so we need to appoint one of the two members, so maybe someone could move to put both names in nomination.
I just have a question.
Sure.
To make sure that we have covered the other musts. You know, that we say one must be...
Oh, it's not must be. It is in a word, must.
Well, shall.
Oh, shall. Well, shall is the same.
Shall have one member experienced in financial matters. Have we covered those shals with the current six members?
Yes. Well, we have covered, we have...
Michael Colasso does real estate and low-income housing.
Does real estate, the low-income, the person who...
I mean, he can be, he can serve too with the...
Yeah, and yeah, he could serve both of that. And then we have people who are in the financial business, Eldridge...
Right, the treasurer is a banker.
And we know who they are.
Okay, so it's municipal government, so...
Exactly. So I think we're covered, in terms of the current membership.
The requirement.
So it doesn't matter, neither one of these two applicants would fill, would need to fill any one of those special considerations.
I would move to put the names Kevin Murphy and Jay Savala into nomination.
Second.
Good. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. So now, we will go by vote. So Doug Jones.
Jay Savala.
I've got to write this down. Rebecca Moffett.
Kevin Murphy.
Sue Moran.
Jay Savala.
Sam?
Jay Savala.
I will go with Jay Savala. So the vote is four to one. Four in favor of Jay Savala, so Jay will be the new appointee to the EDIC, and that requires a signature.
I certainly want to express my appreciation for both candidates to put themselves forward. I appreciate the experience that both would have on that committee, and...
And I would agree. Kevin has been on it as the selectmen's appointee for quite a while, I think since, for quite a while. And I think, he certainly has represented the community very well. And Jay is now, we know, retiring from the chamber. He's retired as of July 31st, so he will be on his own. But I think he also brings a great deal of experience to the board, so that's good. Okay. Next, we want to discuss, oh, wait a minute, we have the Veterans Council Committee.
Yes.
This is Joseph Quintiliani, and this is a recommendation from Richard Castleberry, who's the commander of the Disabled American Veterans, which is what they normally do, is they make a recommendation to us for the person who they have, they would like to represent them on the Veterans Council, and that would be Joe Quintiliani. So is there a motion?
I would move that we accept the recommendation of Joe Quintiliani being appointed to the Veterans Council.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. The motion carries. Now, we're going to move to NOSCA. Well, just to kind of frame this issue a little bit, the community became aware, through the Coast Guard, that they were very interested in not having much to do anymore with NOSCA, the NOSCA Lighthouse, other than operate it as a lighthouse, and so they were offering it to the community, to a nonprofit, to any organization, or anyone who might be interested in, what do I want to say? Sort of taking over.
Licensing.
Yeah, well, it is, it would be a license to, to take care and operate functions there as they saw fit. So I think there were a number of, some of our nonprofits in the community that got together and worked on this, and they all came up with a recommendation that perhaps the town would be the best entity to send this letter in for the license, and that the town could be the licensee, and then if that were to happen, then the groups could get together and either form a new, a new nonprofit, or however they wanted to manage the lighthouse, but the municipality would hold the license. The Coast Guard made it pretty clear that whatever entity applies for a license, they need to have a track record of, you know, financial management in some way, shape, or form. Some of the, creating a new of 501(c)(3) wouldn't work, because they wouldn't have a track record. So this is kind of like, in a way, those, kind of a high-field model, where the town sort of steps in and says, "Well, yeah, we'll be the, we'll be the agent, and then we will help you and work with you on doing all the good things that will come from that." So I'm sure you've all had an opportunity to read this letter. I think it is very clear, and the last paragraph says, "The town of Falmouth is interested in becoming the licensee for NOSCA Light, has a demonstrated experience to successfully lease for its preservation and operation as a treasured historic site, and will have the appropriately motivated and qualified nonprofit partners to responsibly collaborate in this endeavor. The NOSCA Point Lighthouse property may be the single most important icon of our community's nearly 400-year existence. It is not only critical that it be preserved in the public interest, but also that it be carefully managed by those in our community who are committed stewards to this treasure asset." Now, I see Mary Harris here, and Carolyn Parten, and others, Catherine. Do any of, would any of you like to say something in support of this letter?
Maybe you should mention the three organizations that have expressed interest in actually participating in this effort. Should I?
Yes.
Since you're joking.
Since I'm choking, it'd be nice.
Three organizations have already said they would love to be part of forming a consortium, a cooperative, to maintain and operate this on behalf of the town, the Falmouth Historical Society, Highfield Hall and Gardens, and the Woods Hole Historical Museum. So, Mary?
Mary Harris.
Mary, hi.
I'm very excited. First, I'd like to say that this stage of the process with the Coast Guard is a letter of interest. It is not a commitment on anybody's part at this time, because the Coast Guard announced only June 5th that this was available for lease. This is a totally separate process from any transfer of ownership that probably will not happen for many years. Due to the short period of time where there has been an exploratory committee formed with members from the Falmouth Historical Society, Highfield Hall and Gardens, the Woods Hole Historical Museum, and representatives from the Woods Hole Community Association, and this exploratory committee is going to work through the issues of how would NOSCA be managed, what are all the financial issues, the legal issues, purposes and use of this property, and that will take us a bit of time, and we hope to work that out over the next several months. There will be, subsequent to submission of letters of interest, a period of time where the Coast Guard determines who is eligible to actually apply for the license, selecting from among those who submit letters of interest. Anybody who is deemed to be eligible at this time will be asked to submit a detailed plan within 120 days, explaining exactly how you will manage it, not only on the short term, but for the very long term. So there'll be another longer period of time where the complete and final details of how this would be worked out will have to be dealt with. At the moment, it's strictly, we are indicating our interest in doing this, and to the best of our knowledge, we will be interested for a very long time and work out all the details for it. Thank you.
I'd just clarify a few things. It's actually, according to this letter, we're expressing our interest.
Yes, sure.
And we're kind of hoping that we are the only ones who express the letter, send a letter of interest in. At that point, it is not really a competitive thing. We can then just go through the process, take our time to get all the ducks in a row, and be fully prepared to then create the more detailed plan. When we heard from the Coast Guard, it's very rare that they get more than one application for a license. They have not really dealt with this issue before, where there'd be potentially two or three suitors for a property. Often, they go out to this, say, "In 60 days, we want to get something." They get nothing, and the deadline extends beyond until somebody turns something in. And as far as I've heard, there's no one else who's going to be, that I know of, that is going to put a letter that can qualify and send, submit an interest letter also.
The only other potential applicant, and I have not heard whether they will or not, are the Massachusetts Trustees of Reservations. They did express interest at a community meeting that was held in Woods Hole several months ago. It was mentioned that they had an interest in this. To my knowledge, they haven't pursued it, so I don't know whether they'll be submitting or not. But often, when the Coast Guard is putting lighthouses out for license, they're in inaccessible places, for instance, there was no interest in Cleveland Land. Here, we have a really unusual lighthouse in a very accessible and visible spot. But we too are hoping that there will be no other letters of interest.
And it may have just been the Mass Trustees wanted to express an interest in having the lighthouse maintained, and if no one else is going to do it, they would come forward, but who knows?
Right. We will know by August 5th.
Yes, Sam?
I don't think we should be overconfident about that, though, because I lived on the Chesapeake Bay when I grew up there, but 10 years as an adult sailing the Chesapeake, and they put up a lighthouse for sale, there's one of those ones with the legs on it, the platform, and it actually was taken over by an artistic consortium, if you will, and they actually used it for artists to go and spend time in the lighthouse, and they had a taxi that went back and forth, so...
But that was for sale, and we're nowhere near...
No, it wasn't for sale.
Well, that, I thought you...
It was for lease. I'm sorry, I said for sale, I meant for lease.
Okay.
But, you know, there are groups, and I think NOSCA Light, with the house and all, could be a very attractive location for any number of groups that have...
Well, they have to be nonprofit, and the Coast Guard will not, will limit it and not allow residents.
They won't allow people to stay overnight.
Cannot stay there overnight, so...
Let me say that Julian Soso has put together a really great letter here, and if there is any competition, it's going to be hard for us to consider any other applicants seriously.
Well, he had a lot of help with this letter, too.
He did.
Well, it's well done.
Do we, it does refer, make reference to the letters from the organizations. Are those, are those things that we should be seeing before it gets submitted, if it's going under our name?
I've received one, I believe, one to date, so I'm still awaiting two others.
Okay.
Carol, can you, do you mind coming up?
Mary, can you... Well, we, I'm not sure which one you're seeing. The letters have been prepared by Highfield Hall and Gardens, and I believe the Historical Society submitted one.
Yes.
You should have. And the Woods Hole Historical...
History Association.
...Museum.
There was one attached to an email, and that's the only one I've seen to date, but we will look for the others.
That was Highfield, and we also expect letters of recommendation from some of our elected representatives, and we will get those to you prior to the deadline.
So when is the deadline for putting it in the mail? I know it has to be there by, what, August 5th?
Fourth.
August 4th?
It's going to go in the mail this week.
This week?
Yeah, I'm not going to wait till next week.
Okay, good. So it has to be in by Friday?
Well, I...
Or before?
I'd like to have it out the door no later than Wednesday. So any attachments that are not included can be supplemented, would be my view. I don't want to take any chance...
That's one right there.
With all due respect, I don't want to take any chance that there may be a problem in delivery. Obviously, it'll be sent out certified, so we can guarantee receipt, but I don't want to take any chances with calendar. Thank you, Catherine.
And we will see that you'll have the others by Wednesday.
Thank you.
Okay, very good.
I would move that we send a letter of interest into entering a license for NOSCA Lighthouse.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. So we're on our way. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So now, we're down to, been reviewing, I'm sure you have too, some of Town Council's comments related to the term limits. And basically, the committees that are established by the general laws, and the committees that are in the Charter have term limits. So the only committees that would not be obligated for term limits would be any of the ad hoc committees or the working groups. And, you know, to me, to try to start differentiating all that, I don't know how you think, but I think that we should be very careful about removing the term limit thing, because I think when the board did this, I was not on the board at the time, I think it was in '05, maybe, it was 2005, that they really gave a lot of thought to this, because the community was concerned that there were people who had been on committees for a very long time, and never seemed to turn over. And so the Board of Selectmen at that time, I think, gave very careful consideration to creating this concept of the term limits. And if we don't really have any great desire to do this, my thinking is, just let it go, and then we just follow the same path. Because for the most part, there's so very few that are, that you could change, and those would be just working groups. And you would be able to do that at any time. We wouldn't have to create a policy necessarily now. We could determine it anytime. If we had groups that, like, say, it's the Senior Citizen Advisory Working Group that's looking at sites, well, they're not, they're going to have a sunset, obviously, because once the sites are selected and done, their work is over anyway, so they're almost like automatically sunsetted. But, so I don't know, it's up for discussion.
The only one specifically that came up was the Gulf Advisor Committee...
Right.
Who, according to the way it was established, most of them have actually served their terms beyond what they're allowed.
Mm-hmm.
Which I would vote, with what we're going through right now, and trying to reassess our new lease, if there's a way we can change what their term limits are, so what they're doing is actually legal. But there's a two, there's just, maximum is a two, three-year term.
Right.
You know, ideally, I agree with you, it would make sense to be more consistent, say it should be a three, three-year term, but maybe make an exemption for this current...
For this one particular committee, because of the nature of their, they, there's no other group like them. Yeah. I'm okay with that, too. So, yes, Sam?
Go ahead.
I think one thing, the people who are really committed to supporting these committees, even if they're not officially, can certainly participate in the dialogue that goes on, the deliberations that go on. So they can lay off for a year and then come right back on another year.
Come right back.
So, you know, it's not a death knell.
No. It's not a death knell.
Do you think it has any, anything to do with having decisions that are not filled? I mean, are we that far behind on having, you know, having people volunteer to be on committees?
Um...
Or we have more that we're looking for volunteers?
Well, we did have three long-term members of the Conservation Commission had to go off, but they, and they did have to cancel a meeting, because they couldn't get a quorum. But then we... But then we added two people to them as well. We just appointed two new people, Mary Schumacher and, I can't remember who the second person was.
Palani.
Oh, yes, yes. So they have two more. I don't think they're still up to their full membership yet. And then the Gulf Advisory Committee, they, they lost three. Now, one of them is Kerry Murphy, and he was on the board when the, when the board voted this term limit, and he, he supports it. So he doesn't want to continue on this year. He wants to take his year off. But I think, I think we can probably...
What about the Energy Committee? What, are they short since they lost that chairman?
I don't know if they are or not. I haven't.
Okay.
There's one other concern. That's the Coastal Ponds Committee, and George Hampson has asked us to reduce the number of members...
That's right.
...because they have not been able to get a quorum for a long time. I know he's sent a letter to Julian.
We've since had a, had a member suggested that might get them out of the woods temporarily. But we didn't, that, there was no time to place that on the current agenda.
Oh.
It came in too late. So that could be considered in, at your next meeting.
At the next meeting. We should probably do that at that time, especially for the Coastal Pond Committee. We had to do that for the historical, for the historical commission, when they had, like, a seven-member board, and then they wanted to drop it down to five because they had trouble getting a quorum.
I think there's a momentum that builds with some people who volunteer, and they really get things moving, and they're accomplished, and we're pleased with everything they did. And then three years come, and it has, it goes cold, and then it has to start again. I look at it more in that respect as someone really being on a committee that it just isn't working out with personalities or there's no progress with it. I think once you start to say, "We'd love to have, be a volunteer," and you love it, and you, you're devoted to it, and you go and you accomplish, and then you say, "Gee, I only got one more year." Or you say, "Oh, I don't want to do that. It's my last year." I look at it in a way of dedicated people who volunteer in this town, and there's a lot of them, to think that they always have that ahead of them. And, I mean, as, as selectmen, we can decide not to run. As they are members of volunteering on a committee, they have no choice. So I, I really look at it that if it's personality problems, I believe there's ways to handle that. And there are personality problems. There are some people you just say, "I'm not going to be on that committee because so-and-so's there, and it wouldn't work well," and that's smart. But I think when you have really dedicated, good volunteers to have to give up that talent because we have a bylaw that says, "Into three years, you're finished." So I just think a lot of us in going into jobs, we started never thinking that we have to end in three years. The difference here is they volunteer.
Well, in nine years. It's nine years. Three, three-year terms.
After three terms, excuse me.
Yeah, after three terms. You mean three terms, not three years.
Yes, I meant terms. So I don't know. It's, it's a, it's a personality issue, but the whole thing about it is we need to make a decision.
But that's, that's actually a charter issue. We can't get rid of the three, three-year terms on most of these committees.
No, that would take a town meeting vote. On the ones that are in the charter.
Right.
Yes.
But the ones that we, the ones that we appoint, the ad hoc committees, we can limit their terms or extend their terms as we choose.
Because most ad hoc committees, we don't even put a term on there. They're on, only three-year terms by default.
Right.
Because if a term isn't set per committee, it's automatically a three-year term, which can be extended three times.
Right.
And most ad hoc committees don't come anywhere, as you said, don't come anywhere near going on that long.
No. The other thing I was thinking, too, it was suggested by the previous board that we have our meeting with the chairs sometime this summer, but considering how difficult it is to get people together in the summer, I was thinking maybe toward the end of September, we could have our meetings with the chairs again. I know Sam and Sue weren't here then, but we were here when we had it, and I thought it was a very good meeting.
It was good.
And we could take this issue up with them, too, and get their feedback on it, which could be helpful.
Now, that's a, I think that's a good idea.
See what they think?
Yeah.
Because it's been working for, what, nine years now, maybe? Nine or 10 years? And it doesn't seem, it wasn't a really big issue until this year, when, especially with the Concom, when three of the long-term people had to go off. And then when the Gulf Advisory Committee, three of the long-term people who really didn't want it go off either. And that's an advisory committee. That's not a regulatory board. We can't change the commission one, the Conservation Commission, without a town meeting vote.
Then I would make a motion to change the Gulf Advisor Committee to a maximum of three terms instead of two terms, just so it's consistent with everything else.
Oh, so it's consistent with all the others?
Yeah, that's good.
I'll sit.
You want to second that?
Yes.
Any discussion on that motion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None opposed? So that's anonymous. It carries. So the Gulf Advisory now Committee will be consistent with the rest. And I think something else we might want to talk about is, not, not tonight, but to be, to think about sunsetting when we create these ad hoc committees, that we put sunset provisions in there so that we don't, like, right now, we have an issue with the building committee. There aren't any building projects right now. And, so anyway, but, but we're working on that. That's kind of a separate issue, but it's something we have to think about. So the last thing here are the liaison assignments. And I have here a list of, and I'm going to... Here it is. If this is correct, I'm going to go down the list and see if I have your, your checkmarks correct.
Okay.
On the Affordable Housing Committee, Doug. The Agricultural Commission, Doug. The Beach Committee, Rebecca. The Bike Ways Committee, Rebecca. The Water Protection Collaborative, well, that's your assignment, anyway. And the Community Preservation Committee, Sam. Is that right?
Yep.
And Conservation, huh?
Community Preservation Committee?
CPC.
CPC?
I know that, but I'll be happy. Yes.
You would? Okay.
I'll do it.
The Conservation Commission is Sam. The Council on Aging is Rebecca. Is that right?
Yes.
The EDIC is Sue.
Right.
The Energy Committee is Sue.
Right.
The Housing Authority is Doug. The Finance Committee is Sam. The Recreation Committee is Sue.
Yes.
The School Committee is Sam. The Solid Waste Advisor Committee is Rebecca. The Substance Abuse Committee is Sue.
Yes.
The, well, there is, the Town Building Committee is Sam. The Veterans Council is Sue.
Yes.
The Waterways Committee is Sam. And the ZBA is Rebecca. Is that right?
Yep.
Well, um...
What am I missing?
Sue is the Recreation Committee. You got that, right?
Got it.
Recreation, I didn't read that.
And I was Library and Planning Board.
Oh. Oh, I didn't see those ones. Yes, you're Library and Planning Board, and what about the Gulf Advisory Committee?
Yeah.
And you are the Gulf Advisory. And what about Community? Oh, the Munich Preservation is Sam. Okay, Rebecca.
Design Review.
I was wondering about that.
I, um...
Oh, yes. I had you down, and then I crossed you out, but you did want Design Review.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So that gives Doug, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Gives Becky, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6.
No, I think there's seven.
Seven.
1, 2, what did I miss? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6.
Design Review.
Oh.
Design Review. Make sure you got that.
Oh, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Sue?
So she's not that right? Who's, who's the ZBA was?
ZBA is me.
And Veterans Council is Sue.
And Sue has 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
I do.
And Sam has 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. And that leaves...
Affirmative Action.
No, I'm not going to. Affirmative Action, Cable, Board of Health, Cable Advisory Committee, that's three, Coastal Ponds, Historic District, Historical Commission, Human Services. And that's it. So how many is that?
Six.
That leaves six?
I believe it's six.
That leaves eight.
Eight.
Do you want me to pick up affirmative action since you're...
Yes, that'd be good.
...changed up here too much.
You can take it for, and then I'll take all the rest.
Okay.
I'll take the ones that are blank.
Okay.
And that should even it out. So that leaves Board of Health, Cable Advisory, Coastal Ponds...
What was the disabilities? Is that Commissioner of Disabilities?
I didn't even see that.
After the Design Review Committee.
I don't have that.
I don't have that in my list.
Okay.
Since I have seven, is there someone that would like to take Bike Ways?
I'll take Bike Ways.
Okay. That'll make it six.
So then I end up with...
Seven.
Seven. So that's good. Huh? How's that? That works well. So we can get that done and get that published and send the, ask Diane to send the notices out to the different committees through the liaisons.
Will do.
I'll keep this. I know what I'm doing.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
One question. Would you care to have those notices remind the committees what the respective roles of the board members are as liaison to ensure that there is, in the past, there's been a little bit of confusion, as if to suggest that the board members that are liaisons have, have a role, which indeed they do not?
Yes, I think it would be very helpful if we did write that up along with the letter so that the committees know exactly.
That's good.
That they can anticipate that we would attend all of their meetings, and, but our contact information in case they wanted to contact us, and, and what our role as liaisons are. We don't participate in their meetings. We don't give advice or make decisions or things like that.
And specifically, and requests to be on our agenda should still all go to you. Not to, that's not a job liaison to get people on the agenda.
Right, exactly. Yep. That they still follow the regular process, that you're just there to kind of support them, and then, and maybe if the chair wants to talk to you afterwards or something and has some information to communicate or would like, or has an issue, or the committee has an issue, and they're just bringing it to you, you can bring it back to the board, and then we can do what we can do with it. So, but you have something written up like that, don't you, already, on the selectmen's?
In general, we will, we will make certain that it comes together appropriately.
Of course, that they send us a copy of their agenda, because I know I have committees that meet on the same nights, so I'm going to have to be one or the other, obviously. But it would be nice to be able to look at the agendas of both of them and decide whether there's an issue that I think is probably more appropriate for you.
So I think that's, that's a really good idea, have them send us copies of their agenda.
Yep.
Now, like, with the Board of Health, they meet the same night we do, except for the night we don't meet, so... Okay. Then from there, we will have individual selectman reports. Doug?
I did not attend the zoning board meeting, but watched on television, and I just thought it might be interesting to know that, dealing with the parking lot on Ny Road, that the application for that parking lot has been withdrawn without prejudice by the applicant.
Oh, really?
After a fairly lengthy process. I think they were getting a feeling from the discussion of the board that they would be not voting in favor of it, and so they withdrew it before the board had a chance to actually make that vote.
There were a lot of letters. I saw that were not in favor just from community members.
I'm not going to comment. Any other?
Well, I was at the zoning board meeting, and there was a feeling in the air. It was well-run. It was well-managed, and it lasted for hour and a half, two hours, on one subject, and then the final word was it was withdrawn.
Just the parking lot? Or the whole project?
Yes. The, the whole project.
The whole project was withdrawn?
The two parcels on Ny Road.
Oh, on Ny Road.
Yeah, so it was all, it's one project.
Right.
Anybody else? Sue?
I attended the Davisville Civic Association annual meeting, which was on lawn chairs in a wonderful setting, and just a lot of very interested community members in really protecting the lovely area that they live in. And one thing that Barbara Snyder, I thought, made a good report about criminal incident in order to share with the community sort of a neighborhood watch thing. And I think that certainly, you know, the Chief of Police was here and made a report about how the offices are anywhere that, you know, that you call them to be. But I think it's also very helpful in terms of really community watch and watching out for your neighbors, and, you know, it's still something that it's good for neighborhood organizations to help remind their residents. So it was lovely desserts and a fine social meeting, but there was some important information as well.
I got a nice tour of the library by Leslie Morrissey. I couldn't make it when the rest of you got your tour, but it's an impressive facility and an amazing number of resources that are available to the diverse population of this community, serves many, many, many needs, including one of archiving some significant documents relative to the town's history and its litigation and ordinances and such. It's impressive, and I appreciated very much that tour. Otis Porter, Leslie Morrissey, both of them took a tour.
That's good, because Sue and I, I made the tour, too. And I thought I knew everything there was to know about the library, and I found out there are tons of things that have happened in the last few years that I had no idea. It was really a good tour. They spent a lot of time taking us around to the different departments. I thought it was, there was, it was just amazing with the services and the materials that are available from that library. It's really incredible.
I agree.
Yes.
Just keeping relevant, and how libraries are still very vibrant and relevant as community centers and places of knowledge.
I agree.
Yep.
I have another question, something that Mr. Soso mentions in his report, about the parking around Main Street and the traffic. Is there any way that we could advertise that parking is available at Lawrence School? And whether we, is it something we can do, is put up a sandwich board sign saying, "Free easy parking"? You know, if we had it at Lakeview Avenue, said, "Town, you know, downtown parking," and get people there even before they start driving around town, around Main Street. It is great that we're probably as busy as town has ever been. We do have parking on further outsides, but most people who aren't from town don't know that both the schools, Mulan Hall and Lawrence during the summer, can be parked at and easily walk to downtown town from Lawrence School.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because I was thinking about that today, since I was in town at three different times today, and having a bit of a struggle with parking. And I thought the same thing. I wonder if people really know that, because you, when you look over at Mulan School or at Lawrence School, you find that people are not parking there. So maybe there might be some way that we could direct people or do something to let people know that parking is available, and it's not a long walk.
The B and Bs in the hotels, I think, would be glad to hand out leaflets to help, because it would be people that are new, that are not familiar with town.
A sign perhaps at Hamlin Avenue, just indicating that if that Mulan Hall parking
A sign perhaps at Hamlin Avenue, just indicating that, that Mullen Hall parking area is full, additional parking is just down the street, right? In the Lawrence.
In the Lawrence School.
Lawrence School area.
Yeah.
I would be happy to explore that, Madam Chair, and Selectman Jones, presuming that you will allow me to erect an off-premise sign.
[laughing]
You are the permitting authority for that, of course.
I think we can give him the blanket authority to erect an off-premise sign.
Be happy to explore it, in that spirit.
Okay, any other?
Great suggestion, yeah.
Any other reports from the selectmen? Okay. Town Managers Report.
Madam Chair, the, of course, in addition to the, the written comments to the board, I did want to explore with the board, as you're aware, not long ago, we had a joint meeting with the Planning Board, and we had talked about attempting to reconvene in the month of July, and unfortunately, the calendar didn't work out as well as we'd hoped on that. But I did get a suggestion for a couple of alternate dates in August, and, pardon me, we're talking about a 60 or 90-minute meeting, max. I mean, the agenda would be fairly short, is what I'm told. And the suggestion was the off-week, as, as the boards are aware, you meet on the 11th and the 25th of August, of course, your next meeting is the 11th. 25th is the omnibus joint meeting on finance. The week of the 18th, you do not have a meeting scheduled. The suggestion was either Monday, the 18th, or Tuesday, the 19th, for a meeting with the Planning Board for either that Monday or Tuesday. Planning Board does not meet that week either. So, if it would be the desire of the board for either of those dates, if either would be preferred, or perhaps you're available for both, we could see what the Planning Board's availability would be, if that would be your desire.
Are we thinking we're going to do any meeting, any business at the omnibus meeting?
Oh.
Because I'm, because we don't meet on the 1st of September either, and I would think if we, with not having a meeting from the 11th all the way till the 8th.
Yeah.
We might want to make sure there is, either on the 18th, if we meet on the 18th, or the 25th, that, you know, deal with any business that we might have to deal with.
Right. I, I think that, you know, subject to Chairman Flynn's preference, of course, the, I think you could find time on the 25th for a limited.
Okay.
Business schedule, only for the most urgent items, if that would be the desire of the board. You could certainly also do it on the 18th or 19th, and try and get a couple other additional things in, but it's always challenging when you have three boards, as we all know, where the dialogue may go on finance, but the anticipation is a, sort of a primer presentation on finance, question and answer, and it would be my hope that that could be two hours or less, and then maybe a, the most urgent business matters only. One of the things you have to determine, Madam Chair, is where you would prefer to hold that meeting, given that there is some likelihood that we, with three boards meeting, that you may get some substantial public attendance. The last time we had a meeting on finance, it was in the high school library, as I recall, and that did allow for us a number of others to gather around, but whatever your preference would be, we could explore that.
You were there, because you were on the school committee then.
I was there, that's right.
I thought that was great.
I thought it worked well.
The way that boards were.
We had the U.
We had it in a U shape, and each board was a part of the U.
Yeah, and it was, it was, I'd say, two dozen, probably two dozen people with that.
Do you think we could do that again?
I'd be happy to explore availability for the 25th.
On the 25th?
On the 25th.
At what time?
Well, I'm presuming you would convene at 7:00 PM.
Okay.
You could certainly go earlier, if you prefer to, and depending on how much business might be considered for transaction, you may decide to choose, start a little earlier, but at this point, 7:00 PM, tentatively.
I would suggest that we, if we had to, we had our meeting from 6:30 to 7:00, just on essential issues, and, you know, determine will be over in time for the.
That works.
Okay, 6:30, that we would have our own meeting, and then 7:00 for the three groups?
Yeah.
On the 25th of August?
Correct.
Do you have any feeling that the Planning Board would feel more welcome playing on their home turf on the Tuesday, as opposed to our home turf on Monday?
Ooh, save that one down.
They did, I, I know they're not going to meet that week, but you're correct, Selectman Jones, Tuesday tends to be their night. They may feel warmer and fuzzier about it, but it's difficult to know. If, if both of those dates are equally available for members of this board, we could ask, I could reach out to the Planning Board and ask if they, what they would prefer, but that presumes that all of you might be available on both nights. I want to, I want to be biased in favor of this board.
The 25th is the Monday.
It's the Monday, so the 26th?
Well, we've been talking about the 18th and the 19th.
Oh, the 18th and the 19th.
For that joint meeting with the Planning Board.
Oh, the 18th and the 19th.
The Monday or Tuesday prior, yes.
Oh, that's the planning board, this is the three boards.
Yes, yeah, the 25th is the three boards.
I love that one.
The School Committee and Finance Committee.
Phone in the car, so I have no idea.
Would, would this be a 7:00 start? Because if it's earlier, it's.
For the School Committee, Selectman Patterson?
For the 19th, if you did it on the 19th versus the 18th.
Yeah, I was guessing it'd be 7:00, although you could move it up to 6:00, if you prefer that.
And it does the problem.
He doesn't want it at 6:00.
I haven't worked.
I think, yeah, you're, you're in the driver's seat, literally and figuratively, understandable.
7:00 PM is fine.
I'd much rather have it the 18th, but if it's the 19th, I would prefer it be a little bit later, that's all, so I can make it.
Later than 7:00?
No, no.
No, 7:00 is okay.
7:00 is fine, but not 6:00.
Oh, okay.
So, this is planning, finance?
No.
No.
The 18th and 19th would be.
That's on the 25th.
Planning Board and Selectman only.
19th and 19th, there's just planning and us.
Okay. Those dates are all, when, when it's decided, can you sound like a month's schedule, so I can book all these straight?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, there is only one full selectman's meeting in the month of August, and that is on the 11th.
Exclusively for business, that's on the 11th.
Is one full selectman's meeting, 30 minutes on the 25th, before the combination groups, and that's going to be enough for the selectman?
Well, we're uncertain about the agenda at this point.
Well, we don't know yet.
That's the, that's the thought. Could I ask Selectman Patterson, on the 25th, is a 6:30 start too early?
Oh, no. And Mondays are fine.
Oh, Mondays, okay. Very good.
It's, it's the rest of the days of the week.
Yeah. I mean, it's conceivable, subject to Chairman Flynn, that you may want to start at 6:00, 6